Yeah.
You have a good weekend?
I did, how about you? Garden's looking good.
I did the strawberry patch.
I saw that. In fact, we're starting to.
Oh, isn't it? I think that soil is going to be fantastic.
You think so? I was worried about this one. But weed's growing up, so it must be good.
We could use, we could use some of that liquid around the plant.
Who knows what great things we have in store for us today?
It's sitting there.
Wait. It is an adventure Sundays, isn't it?
And composting.
Did you have a lot of people out Saturday?
Eight fifty-nine?
Yeah, about six or seven. Got a lot done. There was just a few things, like those onions.
Do you need any more?
Yeah. I don't know.
Exactly.
I'll put talk to Shannon.
Good morning. This meeting of the Berry County Board of Commissioners for May twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-four is now called to order. If you would please stand for invocation.
Heavenly Father, we just thank you for this day in Berry County. A day after Memorial Day, we pause to remember all of those who have fought to defend our country, all those who made the ultimate sacrifice, all those veterans, all those people, all those wars. We just thank you, Lord, for their families, for their loved ones. We thank you for the sacrifice that they have made to protect our country and protect our freedom, which we enjoy here today. In your name we pray. Amen. It's the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
You may be seated. For purposes of attendance, Madam Clerk, will you call the roll?
Doster.
Present.
Carlton.
Present.
Getty.
Here.
Smelker.
Here.
Hatfield.
Here.
Campbell.
Here.
Tunisin.
Here.
Jackson.
Here.
Reports from state and county officials. Are there any state or county officials that would like to give the board an update this morning? Hearing none. Limited public comment at this time. Any member of the board wishing to address the public may do so for up to three minutes.
Good morning. Rick Moore, Still Harbor Mayor to the Potomac Yacht Club. I wish to remind everyone to speak into the microphone and use your outdoor voice. And I would also like to suggest that we provide some paper towels to clean up the coffee mess every morning. It's just routine maintenance, and that's one of my faults. Thank you very much for the opportunity to speak.
Thank you, Rick.
Eldon Schanberger, Mayor of Weldon Corners. And I would like to see this board address the gypsy moss problem. I think Berry County has dropped the ball on this. I know other counties have already taken action. I know Kent County did. And I'd like to get to, you know, I'd like to see that, you know, I know they used to charge when they sprayed so much per acre, and I think that this board needs to take a look in it and see if we can get this problem under control because in time, those gypsy caterpillars can defecate a tree, and if they defecate a tree twice, it can kill them. And we have a lot of woods and a lot of beauty in Berry County, and I would like to see what can be done to get rid of these invasive species. Thank you.
Thank you, Ellen. Additional public comment?
Very well, Nashville. On your consent agenda, item B, when you look at, you know, in Open Meetings Act, it says committee of the whole minutes, meeting minutes. This is not the committee of the whole, but this is the board, Board of Commissioners. You and your policy have designated two different, one's a committee, one's a board, so your minutes must be approved in the meetings that it is. Intentional violation is against the Open Meetings Act. Item C, I would like to see removed just for the simple fact that there is talk about adding board members to it. In your packet, you will see that the Veterans Affairs Committee can have up to seven. Last time they had a thing, you had, you know, an appointment, you only appointed one, it was brought up that there could be more than, you know, and we were looking to it, it never happened. This time, it's the same thing. If you make that decision today, then people know what's going on, or if you deem that you need to bring it back at another time, that's fine too. But once again, six candidates last time, five candidates this time, there's a want to be on this board, and I think it's important. Point of contact. At your last meeting, you started with a head shake and a nod and approval, you designated a point of contact to be, to deal with a hiring firm. What the problem is, a point of contact also has some authority from the board. The board must grant this by a vote with a motion, a second, and approval. So because there are decisions being made for you, the commissioners, in that, by that point of contact or contacts, and then you need to set the parameters of what they can and can't do. I think there was something talked about, a budget of up to twenty-five-hundred dollars for some type of advertising. Is that, you know, so I said, I think you can add that to your agenda today because you haven't approved your written agenda yet. So I think that really needs to be done and that the parameters set for it. At your last meeting, Mr. Cotton, I guess some things concerned me. He talked about it, meeting minute two out of twenty-six, he has twenty-five personal contacts. He also talked at two forty-three, two out of twenty-three minutes, four hundred students that he has taught. So by lowering the standards, he can bring that in. He encouraged you to stretch the wage number. Now, is that really a value of Berry County residents in stretching the wage number? It also came up, you need to, well, it said I have to put a stretch number out there is what it was. Then you need to explain to everyone else in the county that needs to know. Well, who needs to know about this stretch number? Why do they need to know about this stretch number? Is what I would say now, is this the values of Berry County and its residents? Is this the values of Mr. Cotton? Because if you're stretching the numbers, are you being truthful with your candidates? So I guess I'm concerned about that. There's always a wage gap inequity for people, so I'm not sure if that's who he's talking about or what.
Can you summarize, please?
Uh, yeah. Full disclosure statement should come from him, if these are his personal contacts, if these are his students. Colleges have job placement programs, which another is a red flag because they use job placement programs as a recruitment tool. So I said, I got, I got a lot of concerns how things were presented at the last meeting. Thank you.
Thank you. Additional public comment?
Good morning, Commissioners. My name is Marcus Ringnalda. I'm from Kent County. I'm a member of the Mid-Villa Development Team. I'm here with the lead developer today, Nate Highbore. I was here a couple months ago, just giving you a heads up that we are requesting a brownfield TIF for housing on that project. So here this morning, just to give you a little update, quick reminder on the project, what's proposed is one hundred forty-four apartments, and it's a workforce housing project, meaning there's income verification to ensure that the residents do not make more than one hundred twenty percent of the area median income. And for the last couple of months, we've been going through various approvals. The process included DDA approval, which we secured last week, and village approval before that. We've also done some engagement at the township level to find out that they do not need to vote on it. But it's four and a half million dollar TIF, taking advantage of the state's change to the brownfield program. And our next step is to present to the County Brownfield Redevelopment Authority, which we hope to do next month. So it's a four and a half million dollar TIF request, paid out over fifteen years, and the county is impacted by that with the state education fund and school operating fund. One thing I want you all to know in advance of that meeting is that's like forty percent or more of the TIF that would be supporting this project, and the county has the opportunity to have that entire amount reimbursed by the state through the school aid fund. So in a sense, there's no net impact to the county taxes. So in one of your next two meetings, I would think this will be formally on your agenda, and you'll see the full plan. But just wanted to take the opportunity today to, you know, let you guys know the progress that's happening and that we're here to address any questions after the meeting. So, thank you.
Thank you. Additional public comment?
Hi, Commissioners.
Good morning.
Good morning. Hi. My name is Randy Gladstone. I live at eight fifteen Glug Street in Nashville. I am an employee at the Thornapple Manor. I work at the cottages at the Thornapple Manor, and it's a memory care facility. I think you know about that. In the manner we have, or the cottages, we have three veterans. They're Wes, Rudy, and Bob, perhaps more, I'm not sure. I think that's the three. I'm the chef there. And what I do notice is that they're, one thing they do remember is their public service. These veterans remember their public service to, to the nation, you know. And so my request, I have a small request to put a flagpole and a flag out front of the cottage facility, perhaps by the sign, to represent our honor to them. Thank you.
Thank you, Reedy. Additional public comment?
Good morning. Joel Bittson, Rutland Township. The militia, where does it get its authority? Where does it get its power? From the barrel of a gun, right? What is the purpose of the militia? Well, I would argue that the only useful purpose of a militia in an elected nation such as ours would bring, would be to bring fortuitous men into bad situations and restore peace. It has worked in that capacity through our history. It has also played a deterrent in many conflicts over America's history to bad actors. Some say it's to protect society from tyrannical government, but can it save society from a tyrannical authority that the society voted in itself? Let's play out this hypothetical. Let's say that the government has crossed that red line. It has gone one step too far. And let's assume that the militia removed every elected official, every bureaucrat, every employee. Well, what happens next? Since that particular crowd loves to say we are not a democracy, we are a constitutional republic, I think it's fair to say that they would construct government after the fashion of our nation's founding, or at least their interpretation of it. The only issue with that is we have the same people to elect the replacement government as we did the government that was wiped clean only moments ago. Would we be better off? I would argue we would be worse, much worse. Do you think for a moment that San Francisco is going to elect a more moderate Democrat than Nancy Pelosi? Or do you think that Georgia will tone down their seat with someone more reasonable than Marjorie Taylor Greene? I don't think so. So then what does the militia do? Does it remove all of those who align with their view of evil? Think of the infrastructure that would be needed to accomplish exactly that. You see, it is the people that elect government. So if we have a corrupt government, we have a corrupt people. Can anyone in this room give me one society that has successfully propagated liberty through violence? It is antithetical to liberty. Agree with me or else is not liberty, it is authoritarianism. A militia used to keep a tyrannical elected government in check is fundamentally flawed strategy that will not work, no matter how far back in history you look for its authority. And remember, everyone paints themselves as the hero, completely forsaking the possibility that they might be playing the role as villain, a role that we are much more susceptible to than not. And those of us seeking to run for office need to keep ourselves in check and make certain that we do not become the same people that we do not like in history. We do not need a government change, we need a change of the heart, and with that will come government.
Thank you, Joel. Additional public comment? Hearing none, we will move ahead with our agenda. Approval of written agenda, including consent items for discussion. Does any commissioner wish to change the agenda? Mr. Doster.
I'd like to remove nine C, please.
Nine C. Okay. We will take item nine C and put it on items for consideration. Any additions? Additional changes? Hearing none, the agenda is approved as amended. Various correspondence, does any commissioner wish to share any correspondence with the
I would, I would just share that I think some of you also receive phone calls from various individuals and townships complaining about the spongy moss that the phone started ringing last week, and apparently they have hit their peak where they are hungry and they are everywhere, and they are annoying a lot of our citizens right now. So that'll be a subject I think we need to get Jamie Hedges involved from the conservation district. But I talked to Mike Cunningham, and he had mentioned, he had sent me some documents on some of the spraying projects that they had had in the distant past. We also have concerns, I know from other folks, with pollinators, bees, butterflies, stuff like that. So we should probably talk to Jamie and see, from what I've heard, that we are past a time of productive spraying where it would do any good because they're almost at the end of the life cycle. However, it may not be a bad idea to look forward it in the plan because I think townships have been assessed in the past based on those that wanted spraying and those that didn't. So maybe there's a way we can look at this and be proactive versus reactive to it because it's a, it's a situation which doesn't seem to be going away, although I think Jamie, when he was here, had mentioned that they're at kind of their peak cycle and should be going down. But should be isn't really a good answer. So we'll see.
Any other correspondence? Anybody like to share? Okay. Consent agenda, Commissioner Tunisin.
Thanks, Mr. Chair. Approval of May fourteenth, twenty twenty-four Board of Commissioner meeting minutes. B, approval of May twenty-first, twenty twenty-four Committee of the Whole meeting minutes. Item D, approval to the airport, oh, no, excuse me, approval to appoint the following the Division of Berry County Land Bank Authority, Cindy Vail, for a partial term beginning May twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-four, and ending April thirtieth, twenty twenty-five, and Douglas Powers for a three-year term that began May first, twenty twenty-four, and ends April thirtieth, twenty twenty-seven. E, approval to extend the professional service agreement between Berry County, the Berry County Solid Waste Oversight Committee, the Berry County Conservation District for Recycling Coordinator Services for twelve months, effective June first, twenty twenty-four, through May thirty-first, twenty twenty-five. F, approval in accordance with the Airport Commission Joint Operating Agreement of the expenditure, expenditure of up to sixteen thousand one hundred and seventy-five dollars to purchase a minivan for courtesy vehicle and to approve an amendment to the Hastings City Berry County Airport Budget One, increasing revenue line item number two nine five dash zero 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 dash six seven nine dash zero one zero from one thousand to seventeen thousand one hundred and seventy-five dollars, an expenditure line item number two nine five dash eight nine five dash nine seven seven dash zero 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 from seventeen thousand five hundred to thirty-three thousand six hundred and seventy-five dollars. G, approval to increase the twenty-four, twenty twenty-four approval capital budget in the vehicle fund to purchase and equip twenty twenty-four Chevrolet Tahos for law enforcement use by ninety-seven, ninety-seven thousand nine hundred and seventy-seven dollars from the one hundred and thirty-five thousand to two hundred and thirty-three thousand nine hundred and seventy-seven dollars. The approval of the Berry County inmate administrative service contract with Blue Cross Bootshield in Michigan for July twenty twenty-four through June twenty twenty-five.
Is there support? Motion by Tunisin, support by Smelker for all items listed on the consent agenda. Discussion is not allowed, and a roll call vote is required. All those in favor, vote aye. Opposed, vote nay. Madam Clerk, will you call the roll?
Doster.
Aye.
Carlton.
Aye.
Getty.
Aye.
Smelker.
Aye.
Hatfield.
Aye.
Campbell.
Aye.
Tunisin.
Aye.
Jackson.
Aye. The consent agenda is approved. Presentations. This morning, we have with us Drain Commissioner Jim Dahl for the annual report.
Good morning, Commissioners. Jim Dahl, Brake on Drain Commission. Leslie, hopefully can help me through this thing because we're trying to do it with a clicker. I know that's quite a jimp for us. Hey, there it is. The annual report, that's one of the prettiest pictures we've had on any of our projects. Only engineers caught that the morning or the evening, no, the morning, one of the things. The annual report, which I respectfully submit in accordance with Section thirty-one, Chapter two of the Public Act forty of nineteen fifty-six as amended. Report is for the calendar year beginning January of one, twenty twenty-three, through the end of twenty twenty-three. We did add a little bit beyond just to keep you guys up, up to speed. We've been very busy moving projects along with new petitions and ongoing repairs. The Drain Office continues to review and revise drain district boundaries in the county to ensure that the assessment districts are in line with the water sheds. This process ensures landowners are in the appropriate drainage district. The Drain Commissioner will continue to do in-house work where the equipment has been purchased to continue to save taxpayers money. When a drainage district crosses county lines, a Drain Commissioner serves by statute an intercounty drain board. Each drain board is its own legal entity. Drain boards are made up of each county's Drain Commissioner and chaired by a representative of the Michigan Department of Agriculture and Rural Development. These individual districts are run by the board as a whole. Berry County is actively involved in multiple intercounty drainage districts with Alligan, Eaton, Amory, and Kent Counties. We're doing, we are doing repairs typically at three hundred dollars a day for the mini excavator and seven hundred a day for the three hundred eight excavator. We're doing plenty of drains at about a bucket foot, which is, I think, going right, right now is around three with the big boys, but they're busy. We've been doing intercounty drain borrowings to save interest and borrowing finance. Costs us a lot of money when we go to the bank to borrow money, so we've started down the path of doing inter, when you have money left over in a drain project, you can legally loan that to a drain, a different drain district as long as the money's there and it gets paid back at the same interest as what the original is charging. And it does save quite a bit of money on small, very small projects. We did ask Michael about doing borrowings from the county itself to do these, and he was reserved about it for anything over a year or two because he said he doesn't like to tie up the county money. Sue Van De Kauw and I had the same discussion, so Alligan County does do that, and they pay the county, I believe it's two percent. So, just a thought. We've installed a land lake dam. That's a picture of it. Hairless machine built it for us, and we got, finally got our DEQ permit, and it's installed. And as of the first week of May, we had put the boards in, and they're at the legal lake level. So people seem to be pretty happy about that. The Watson pump system. Leslie? Ain't working. What did I do? Good girl. This is the screen system that is set up in Building 20. It does, we were required to meet a 40-micron filter. This one is an 80 in the first step and a 25-micron filter in the second step. This would take water if we needed it from the detention pond on Dalton Road up to the outlet into the Dalton Drain, which is on the north side of Pine Lake Road. It's a, it was a long process getting it built, but everything's in place now, ready to run. But we have not had to pump north yet.
Is it on?
I don't know. How do I know if it's on? Nothing. There you go. Okay. Next slide. All right. Building 10 is completed, Building 20 is completed, all that stuff on Watson is done, done, and we haven't had to pump since May of the last year. So the lake seems to be under control. Actually, it's a little bit low. Cloverdale Drain is complete. We met with the association in Cloverdale Lake. They've approved a lake level of 922.75. So we will be moving forward illegally on that to set a court order. The chase drain petition work is complete. This is before pitches where the, basically, we had blown out waterways. So we moved forward under petition and we did them. Ross Jackson's guys did all the work last year and it looks really nice out there. Go ahead. Next. 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 All right. This is what it looks like now going forward. The next several slides. Try this thing again. This actually brought water from the Spindler up on Ramon Road all the way across Colts Grove Road down into the existing chase drain. This actually, if you back, shoot, I wonder if I can back up to it? No, I'm not seeing it. I know it's there. That lower left corner picture, that is the culvert that was underneath Colts Grove Road, 100% overdone by dirt. Wasn't functioning very well. We did replace that. And this is what it looks like now, into the pre. So Ross Jackson's guys did a really nice job. All right. This is on to Jordan Lake Dam. Jordan Lake drain maintenance, we had Ross's guys coming in. They were the best price. They were actually, they got five bids on doing the riprap and the tree clearing and they were all within less than $1,000. So that was pretty tight bidding. This is the junk that gets up against the dam that makes people mad because we can't get enough boards out. And when people let their docks get loose or telephone poles or trees, we end up with a lot of issues. So we went in, the picture on the left is the bank before we cleared it. On the right, it's 100% carpet with riprap and blanket. Same thing here. Left is original, right is second or after the work is done. Same thing here, left and right, left and right. This is, again, now, the whole reason for this is in the past, Jordan Lake, they did not, before I came in, they said they couldn't open more than five boards in the winter, which is a mistake. Talking to Larry Porter Shovitz at Spicer, he said it was designed to have at least eight boards out all the way through the winter using Jordan Lake as a detention pond. So we have eight out. He said, if you can, if you got enough riprap and it's safe to do it, you can have 10 boards out. Now by putting all the riprap in, we can safely remove all 10 boards in the winter. So we should do it, prevent the flooding. This one is the Duncan Lake 2, another long petition project. We had, they did the original Duncan Lake 2 back in '14, I believe. We had another petition because it flooded roads and houses. We actually had three petitions on this one, landowner, road commission, and township because of all the flooding issues out there. So we moved forward. This is what it is. Up the right corner is the edge of Duncan Lake where it blew out because of the rainstorm. And so, and again, you can see the tile laying open. It just, the water coming down through there was extreme. We did have a scope meeting on this and presented two options and the people voted for the more expensive project. They wanted, their roads were, get it done and we didn't want to see you again. And that's what we did. That was flooding caused. This is when they started construction. We built two detention ponds and then took the water away from the lake 100% and it goes down to Duncan Creek. Sidewalks, driveways had to be replaced. This is a grate in one of the driveways to take care of the water before it hit the house. The turbidity curtain in the creek. And this is what it ended up looking like when we were all said and done. Worked out really well. Scott Padlock's guys did that. And then with that, whoops, let me back up just a little bit. When we did that, we also coordinated with Eric at, telling up the township to do all the borrowing in one group to cover the cost of the Naftke Road project and the drain project. This saved at least $17,000 upfront in finance charge. So they didn't have to borrow money and we didn't have to borrow money in two different loans. And then we got them, then the better interest rate because we could use the county's credit card, credit. What's that called, Michael?
Credit rating.
Credit rating. So everybody up there seemed to be happy that we're trying to save the money. This one's a gaming. That one just got completed this year. We had the first petition back in '18 from the road commission and they withdrew it. They thought they could fix it. They tried three more times to fix this issue. Finally, they came back and petitioned it again and the property owners also petitioned us. This was flooding on a gaming up against State Road. It flooded the road about six inches and then it would go into a property or a homeowner's property. So that, that one, we got the petition in January of '23 and we've already finished it. And the gentleman that owns the storage units on the other side of State Road called me and said, the contractor did such a nice job, he left his property better than it was when he started. This is the one we had five bids on and arranged from $150,000, no, I'm sorry. The next one will be, sorry. This one, we had three bids and they varied about $30,000. So that was not unusual. This is the side of State Road where they started. This is the sand that was in the culvert that the road commission had attempted to cure the problem with. This is what it looked like when it got done. Everything's back in place. 10, that ends on the corn stick of the death, he said he'd give us the easement one more time and after that he wanted it done, never do it again. This one's pre on MacArthur, another petition we started back in 2021, I believe. This is the one Bob, you'd asked why there was such a discrepancy in the contractors. Randy Meyer from Holland got to us $160,000. The highest bid was $360,000. They got it done. They got it done on time and everything's working really well up there. William had a pretty good rain event here a few weeks ago and Eric Bunkowski that's on there said the water came up half what it usually did. So this is under construction. So these contractors do get a big variance in, you know, what they're doing. That's how nice it comes in. It comes right in behind Rick's, outlets right down there by Rick's RV shop. They got their seed in. We're out there growing a stump Friday, taking care of the last little bit. We put an outlet for the neighbor's property so that could get in there. Now, Meadowland, Meadowland drain we have ready. That's going to be going out for bid in, I believe, May 30. So that's when we got to the point of getting bid out. The permit is in for the Crystal Lake dredging project. I remember we came up in front of you guys for the authorization, spend over $10,000. People want to, want to at least get to the permit to see what the cost is, to get an accurate measurement. We're working with DEQ. We had a pre-op meeting in August last year. Remember, got the results till October and they sent us back about a two-page list of things that we, they want to see in addition to everything that we've given them. As I've said, we've been doing some of the maintenance work ourselves. State Building Extension, that project is actively, we're working on that one. That one, we got resolutions from both townships and the village to move forward. We're doing maintenance down on Ned Brown's Jewel. Dan Warden got ahold of me and said they never cleaned out his section. The road commission is working with us by changing both culverts, one on North Avenue and one on Dowling Road. The one on North Avenue, when they put it in, it was set about two feet too high. The one on Dowling Road, which is the accepting one, is actually a five footer instead of a six footer. So that's blown out the banks. And so Jake and I have been working together on getting those two changed out, which will help that drain district quite a bit. We've got subcontract work still to come on Bray and Livingston. We had to clean out a section of Bray, or Sandy Beach was the intercounty. Actually Brent Skelton from Alligan had a good contractor that could get in and get that cleaned out. GEI is under contract on Thornapple Drain Room, which is from Nashville all the way to Thornapple Lake. It will create a nice place for people to go fishing, kayak and canoe and a water trail for Charlton Park if you want to get there from Nashville. It's a, it's a good project. We've had resolutions to seed on that one also, so we can get it all done at one time. And we've also been doing some, some maintenance work on Quaker Brook in our county. So... These are the projects, I don't know if it's in our list, of all the ones that we've been working on. Beaver trapping, our beaver trap, I think God came back this year. Earl Craven, he works out throwing up manure. He traps for us. We have an average of about 200 bucks a beaver in to take him out. He's taken 30, 31 of them since he came back in March. To put that in perspective, Alligan, the last one I saw, they took out two and it cost us $1,200. Kent County did two up on Duncan Lake intercounty and the bid was $2,700. So, and we're trying to get, and we also have Johnny Lombardo up on Duncan Lake that actually is helping us out. He said, hey, he'll trap them for 60 bucks if they're right there next to his house. So we got a lot of people trying to help us get things done. So, any questions?
Questions from commissioners?
I think, I think, I think we're in pretty good shape. We'll have a major rain event for a lot of these lakes and stuff now, right?
Yeah, yeah. We're doing, I mean, things are a lot more controlled than they were. So we are, I mean, we got other permits that we're still working on with DEQ. They're a challenge. I'm going to put it that way. So, any other questions?
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
I was already having this conversation with you
Yeah.
about flooding on Wellman Road and you didn't feel like the MacArthur drain would have much effect on that, but the chase project?
Depends on which, which section of Wellman Road you're at. If you go all the way to the, almost 43 on Wellman Road, I went up there the other day just to check and 90% of that water on Dave, what's Dave's last name?
Did Hammer?
Pardon?
Did Hammer?
No, no, Minkley, not, Minkley, Dave Minkley's property. There is a high spot there, so that comes to the south. MacArthur goes to the north. They do have a catch basin on the north end of their thing that does go into the MacArthur. Now Spindler is, does cross Wellman, Colway south of there, just north of Colts Grove Road. And by doing this, we've taken water off Jeff McKenzie's property on the east side and then we brought it down through Spindler, which is part of the chase now. So it worked out good. And even Tim Redbeck said he doesn't mind paying as long as he gets a benefit. So having, reaching out to the property owners, it really helps to get them involved and see if we have any other issues to take care of. So...
And I did tell Mrs. Carpenter that you'd be working on cleaning that out this summer there and she was delighted.
On which one?
Betty Carpenter.
On which one?
That's, that's up at MacArthur, uh, Wardland.
Through, through 19 Main Street. Yeah, yeah, you were there. We're going to have to lay plywood down through there to get in there. They got trees on the creek. It's just started meandering on Stairs and Parrot. We're all working with Jamie out to the conservation district and Jake at the road commission about changing the Stairs and Parrot crossing under Wellman Road. Jamie has a $250,000 grant to help. So we're looking at if the road commission can save money by doing that. So if everybody works together, maybe we can save everybody a lot of money. So...
Okay. Commissioner Getty?
Just want to say, you brushed over the Duncan Lake drain there
In the county?
in Thornapple Township.
The intercounty?
No.
Yeah, Duncan Lake 2?
Duncan Lake 2. And that was a really difficult project. We spent some, some time out there and you spent a lot more time than I did. And it looks really nice. I think it's going to permanently solve that issue for that homeowner that was really affected. The, the Villa, not Villa, Town Center drain there?
Yeah, yeah.
How well is that working? And does there need to be maintenance with that woody growth that's coming up?
It's working great. Wes and I were out there here a while back and cut down 90% of the, the widows. That, to my own fault, we didn't know the other side in front of where one of those was actually part of the drain until, well, Brian Leaks got ahold of me and said, you're going to cut that forest down? And that was two years ago. And I says, that's not our drain? And he says, yeah, it is. So we went in there, Joey Harvath was working with me at the time. We spent four days cutting down trees because it'd been neglected for, well, since it was built. And that was two years ago. So Wes, he's our new maintenance guy, he was working for us through Joe Searle, through starting over for us. He just got his certification to do the spraying so then we can start controlling them widows down in there. And Brad Bennett does the milling on both sides for us. Got it looking a whole lot better. So we still got a little bit of work, but when things are impacted for 12, 10, 12, 14 years, it's, it's a hard road getting them back where they need to be. So, but yeah, that Duncan Lake 2 is a challenge. But it worked. So...
Spray Grove.
Yep.
There's been some questions on the construction and the drainage on Spray Grove. What's going on down there?
NDOT is going to put a new culvert under M43. And they, and they want to put a 6x14 box culvert in there where currently there is a three-foot culvert. Jim Davis, our NDOT guy with drainage, we've been working with him for two years to change that out under the Watson project. NDOT pays for all that stuff 100%, which is great. Well, NDOT in their infinite wisdom has decided they need something a whole lot bigger in there and they did hydrological studies and yada, yada, yada. And we said, okay, then if you're going to do it and not follow what we're asking, you're going to get your own permit from DEQ. Well, DEQ came back and said, okay, you can change it. Now you got to put a structure on the edge of the Glastby Lake to hold the water back in Glastby Lake. So they've been going back and forth. So it isn't just us that fights with DEQ. And, you know, with that or otherwise, I don't know if that structure, Jim Davis called me and said, hey, would you object to it if we put it in and have you move the boards to move the water if you need? I said, well, if this is what we got to do to get the road fixed, I guess we got to kind of follow it. But we have pushed back some. And then Jim, because the water in Glastby was higher than Upper Crooked Lake, which, it's just a pass-through system. Basically, it's equalization culvert. Jim Davis called me about two, maybe three weeks ago and said, I recommend that the Drain Commissioner clean out from Upper Crooked Lake commissioner clean out from Upper Crooked Lake all the way up to M43 to get the water down in Glassby, so we don't, we have some pushback against DEQ. So, we got ahold of Scott Palack, got Jim Davis a member of cleaning that out. In the process, we found that when the, the culvert was replaced by the drain commissioner about 12 years ago, it was two feet too high, the one under Sprague. So, we reset that down two feet. Um, you got to remember, back then, typically the drain commissioner didn't do the background work to know what the original historic grade is. They just said, put in a culvert, and it was done. So, we believe dropping that down and cleaning that out will add a little bit more water to Crooked Lake, which right now they're about seven, eight inches lower than where they, we'd like to see them, at a lower spot. And also, MDOT's paying for the whole thing, so it's, uh, when MDOT says, you need to clean that out and we'll pay for it, then we're obliged to do it because they're paying the bill. So, now, having said that, once they change the box culvert under M43, James assured me that they were putting a new culvert under Sprague Road that would fit whatever we require, so, just so we knew the game.
Okay. There's been a lot of questions and other concerns just because of the expense of that project-
Right, yeah.
...and being assessed to more money, so I'd be happy to know that they are not going to pick up the tab for any more of that, so.
Well, and we come in, um, I think we're about 700,000 left over on Watson, so, I mean, we had people contact us about trying to fix stuff, and we explained to them, we didn't have that opportunity. We have to have everything the first time around. When it's fixed, there's a, there's a percentage set aside for future maintenance because we don't want people getting hit again, so. But, yeah, we still got money in there, so.
So, that 700,000 is not going back to the people who paid?
The, the, okay, technically, if you go through the drain code, if, and I can't remember what the timing is, it's like 10, 15 years, if the drain commissioner sort of decides to send that money back, then they can return it, but I don't quite know how you would ever do that because property owners have already moved on. So, and talking to Brady Hinton from MDOT, he said he's never seen it happen, unless, unless they abandon a drain and there's money left over. Typically, it's set aside, it says right in the code for maintenance, so.
Okay. Um, the other question is, I've received a couple emails with, from Crystal Lake residents who are frustrated with the process. We've been talking about Crystal Lake for probably over a year.
Well, more like three.
So, what is the holdup with getting that dredge dam fixed, whatever they're-
With DEQ permitting.
Okay.
First, we went to the people because it's a small district, and said, okay, what do you want us to do? Do you want sediment catch cleaned out, the creek cleaned out, or lake cleaned out? Because back in, when Tom Doyle was in, the upper dam blew out and put a lot of sediment down in the creek, and they got a few hundred yards of it out, but realistically, it could stand four or 5,000 yards, it weren't taken out. So, we sent our, we had a survey here, we met with the people, I guess, and had a survey and said, what do you want done? And they came back to us and said, we want the sediment catch cleaned out, and we want the creek cleaned out. We said, okay, and that's where we came in front of you guys, and we said, okay, you give your signatures, and I will take it to commissioners to see if we can spend up to $30,000 to get through the permitting process, letting the project, that's simply to get a permit from DEQ and all their requirements. Now, when we met out there in August, a couple of the concerning things were when Kate, Kate Patrick, the wetland girl said, did you ever think about taking these dams out? That one was like a live balloon, of course. Um, so that was hard, and we finally got, we were supposed to get a pre-application meeting packet back within a couple weeks of the meeting. We had that meeting in August, we got it in October, and the first thing they asked was a wetland delineation, which you can't do in, in the winter, and they know that, so. That wetland delineation is going to be done about June 30th, and the others, the other portions of it, they had a whole, they had two and a half pages of things that they wanted us to go through to take care of us. Um, the other reason we're nervous about that project is the dam on the Lower Crooked Lake is, it's in reasonable shape, but we explained to them, in 10, 15 years, you may be looking at having to replace that. And, you know, it's a small district, there's 42 parcels, 45 property owners, and it's a lot of money, and it's scary for us. We don't want to get somebody into something that, that, you know, and if it was a drain district, it'd be a different animal, because it's a lot, drain districts are huge, lake level quite often or not, so. Even, even with Long Lake, I mean, the special assessment district there is what, 150 properties? It's small, so.
Well, they're, they're frustrated, so.
Oh, yeah, yeah, and I didn't blame them at all. Uh, we are having, we're trying to set up a meeting with me, Mia Chandler, who's in the audience, and Bob Miller, uh, and Stephanie. We just had their annual meeting about a week ago, and we, we didn't know about it, well, we didn't, we hadn't been told about it ahead of time to have a meeting with them. Um, so we're trying to set something up probably July, August, with all their members to go over what's going on, show, we have sent them the list of all the things that DEQ expect out of us. Um, the engineer's pushing back on the sediment pond, he says, this shouldn't even need a permit, it's a sediment pond. Don't know. But the creek, which they do want to do at the same time, um, definitely needs a permit, so.
We'll keep communicating with them, I know that-
Yeah.
-there's some angst, so you can work through that. Um, my final question is on the Thornapple, number one to Nashville.
Yep.
Um, when I was new to this seat, we had this beautiful issue with Coldwater Creek.
Yes.
So, I want to be sure that that is being handled correctly, that there is somebody monitoring that situation-
Yeah.
-that the DNR is involved in it, whoever needs to be. I mean, if we do a mile of that and they approve it, great, but we don't want to get into what we got into last time, so.
Well, and we, that whole thing is done with chainsaws and pulleys. We have not put any, as they call it, yellow wire on there. We ran it through DEQ, or, uh, GEI because Stu Kirby's one of our best wetland specialists. He, he's ex-DEQ, he knows what can, needs permitting and what does not need permitting. Um, and we've been out there, Liz and I floated it last September-ish, um, from Barge Road down to the lake, they've got it all cleaned out. All they'll do is pull the trees out and wedge them into the other ones so that they don't have, uh, so you don't have to have any steel holding anything in place, because that's a, something you have to have a permit. We're not doing any dredging on it because our belief is if we get all the junk out of the way, the water will quite often take care of itself, so. But, yeah, it's, it's, well, it's 14 miles, we want to make sure we do that one right. Um, it just, and, and the saving grace is that's not main waters. Main waters, there's only five of them, I believe, in the state, and the Little Thornapple's one of them. And that's one of those that you cannot touch anything without a permit period, even though it's an inner county drain. And that was one of the things that caused a big rift back in 14, 15, because they did some work from Jerry Lake down to M, or M43, and that's all main waters, so.
That was expensive, so let's not go into that again.
Mm-hmm, yeah.
Okay. Additional questions from commissioners? Commissioner Doster?
Um, I was looking, uh, for your annual report for last year-
Yeah.
...so that I could kind of compare to see if the, the progress. Did, and then I couldn't actually remember receiving one.
No, you did not. Um, typically, we put together, put the report together in March, February, March, um, to present it in April. Uh, if you read the drain code, it's supposed to be presented in October unless the commissioners have passed a resolution to do it in April. Since I've been in, we've done it in April each year that we did it. Um, we didn't do it when last year, I lost Tammy, who was a big, it was a very hard challenge to keep the drain office working smoothly from January to, well, Liz hired me in April. Tammy had been there for 14 years, and trying, trying to scrape together a report would have been almost impossible. Um, Liz came in April, it takes about two to three months to get somebody right up to speed on, on all the comings and goings and all that stuff. She's done a phenomenal job coming up to it, but we could not get a, uh, a presentation put together for April and May. If you guys want one, we can go back and go through the records and get you one, we'd be tickled to death. Um, but I look back through 22, and most of the stuff we were doing, a lot of it was Pine Lake, um, which had started before that and ended this last year with a, with a permit. Um, the other ones were projects that were, had started previously and just never got them finished up because of the permitting and stuff, so. But, yeah, I mean, we'd be tickled to death if the commissioners want it, we can hit a few highlights of 22 for you and bring up a, a report.
Isn't there a, uh, don't you also have to submit this to, uh, there's a state agency that-
MDOT, yeah. Um, we've not heard anything back from them. I don't know whether they don't, didn't want it, or it's lost in their records, or whatever.
I would, I would think that they would want it, yeah, but.
Well, the, the one, well, the one big project we had was the Cloverdale one, and we got the number one project in the state, so I'm pretty sure they know about that one. The inner counties, we did a little bit of cleaning, but other than that, there was nothing going on. It was a, it was a lot of paperwork here, so.
Well, um, so, I looked online to see if there was a report for last year, and there, there was something that looked like a report for the drain commission that was dated January the 30th of last year. It was all in alphabetical order of the projects and had a lot more detail in it.
January 30th of last year? It was probably one that Tammy had started accumulating from the late, the year before. I didn't find that.
But that was never presented anywhere?
Not up here, no, no.
Okay. Well, it, it listed a couple projects that, that, I couldn't see that were, had been updated. I was just wondering if I could ask a couple questions on those.
Yeah, do that.
Um, there was the Castleton Woodland Drain. It said the construction was anticipated in fall of '23 or spring of '24?
Yep. That one, we had not moved, uh, we got the petition five years ago probably on that, and because of all this on Cloverdale and Watson and stuff, that slowed the progress. Brian Sensi's the engineer on that. We've been out, I should be talking to this. We've been out and talked to property owners in that project. Uh, Matt Henley would like it to cross his property, would like to take it all the way up to Davenport Road. Originally, MDOT was just going to do some cleaning out downstream for us. Um, they even offered to change the culvert size underneath the road if that was going to be the problem, but we're still working on that one. Some of these take a long time to get anywhere.
Is there, is there a Duncan Lake drain separate from the Duncan Lake Two?
Yes, I love the-
It said that you were, that you would be submitting an Eagle permit in the-
Correct.
-spring of 2023? What happened there?
We had the meeting last year, well, actually Kent County met with DEQ to get a pre-application meeting. Um, I'm glad you brought that up, I couldn't really get it in the report, because we haven't, it hasn't moved all the way through. Um, the people on Duncan Lake, and I've been there, that lake will come up five to eight feet in a day. It's ungodly. It's a 190-acre lake with a 19,000-acre watershed coming into it. We've had the notice of, most practically, notice of necessity. The engineer and Kent County, Ken Yonkers, met with DEQ last spring and said, okay, this is what we were thinking we want to propose. We would, we would, I mean, outlet of Duncan Lake, we would put in a beta box culvert on Navkey Road and Duncan Lake Road, and we would ditch, we would drop the culverts two feet and drop the bottom of the drain two feet. That way, as the water comes in, it drops right away, gets away quicker. Great. Went through the whole thing, the engineers put the whole plan together, went to DEQ, and DEQ said, no. They said, if you dig on the downstream side, lower than historical grade, it's going to become a red line drain district. That means any route going forward will have to be permitted, every part of it. The second part is, it would take one to three years to review that permit, and it has to go through EPA. So, they, the engineers came back to us last year and said, this is, we can still upsize the culverts, but we do not, and a culvert, some of the people were like, well, just go ahead and do it, and they don't realize it could be millions and millions of dollars just to get that extra two feet, and we may never get a permit on that one. So, the engineers advised that we not do that. There is, we are looking at changing the culvert on Navkey and Duncan Lake Road, which, like I explained to Ken Yonkers, because he didn't really want to pay for anything in Berry County, I said, the banks are blown out downstream of Duncan Lake Road. That means that culvert is undersized for the water coming through because it swirls. Okay, he could get on board with help and pay for that. We talked to Jake from the Road Commission, he and I, after a few back and forth, we got an engineering estimate of changing the culverts, the same, changing out the culverts and keeping the same size, because he said, well, you know, it's, we could do it ourselves. That, that estimate come in at 350,000. Jake said, well, he wouldn't have the mobilization, but he would all, all the other costs, so he said he'll pay 300,000 towards changing them two culverts. The cost of those two culverts is about 750,000 to change them out to the bigger size, which is, I think it's 20-foot wide box culvert on both of those. Um, but we also have to change the one on 108th Street because that one is not in good shape. The reason we got a petition was 108th Street would be underwater in these big rains because it would go over the road instead of through the culvert. So, we have to, for the Road Commission to raise that road and not flood anybody out and not take the liability, we have to change the culvert under 108th Street. So, that's another portion of that project. Ken, Ken Yonkers up in Grand, or Kent County, has reached out to the farmers on the upper end and got all of them to give us a wider easement so we can do two-stage ditching up there. So, normally the water will follow the bottom channel. When you get a big rain, it will spread out wider in that secondary flood stage, which of course slows the water a little bit and drops out some of the sediment, that's a plus. Ken got all that stuff squared away. At 100th Street, the Road Commission, Kent County Road Commission and DEQ is going to rework that drain area and actually create a wetland there that will settle out some of the dirt, slow the water down. It's a big benefit, and the drain office is not, the inner county drain is not expected to pay anything on that, which is a phenomenal, so. But it's still, I mean, I'm going to say it's going to be a year, year and a half before we can get that thing to bid, so.
Garble drain, so is easement review started?
Yep, we've got two of the easements, we need a one, a third one, we've been about nine months. The lady that did own it sold it, and then they sold it, and then they sold it. Now, the guy that owns it, we sent him a letter about the easement. That would be so we can put a culvert in the road to take the water off Finkbinders on the south and bring it to the north. Without that permit from DEQ, we can't put that culvert in, and, uh, Brian said, if I got to pay for some of this, I want relief too, because he was flooded, seriously flooded. The Road Commission, I believe, one year raised the road three times trying to keep it out of the houses on the north side, and Brian, thank God, was good enough to say, I'll let you do it if you bring my driveway up so it ain't underwater. It was, it's a bad idea. That one was a tough one. The property owner, we've sent, the last easement we need, we've sent it to him, he said he's thinking about it. Um, I talked to Chad McHale, the engineer on it, and I said, well, go ahead and submit the DEQ permit without that one. DEQ does not like to accept a permit without all the easements in place, but they don't have the legal right to require it, but it's, without that, it's going to be a ticklish deal. It's, I mean, they say, well, you don't have this, this, this easement. Because we have the power of condemnation, we can get the easements if we want, but DEQ, they're, they're playing a power game, and they're trying to extend as far as they can, but they, it's pretty hard to argue with somebody that their lawyer is the Attorney General, so.
Uh, Pain Lake?
Yes.
That's currently under review by MDOT?
Yep. They, uh, what they're looking at, this is what we propose, the water, if you turn on Lynn Drive and go down 150 feet, we've had the videos where it's coming right across the road during these big rains, which is bad. Um, when they did that project back, uh, 2012, 2013, I mean, you got to remember, the lake is high. They took the water to the lake, it really doesn't have a good flow on that system, so we went to Jim Davis at MDOT and said, hey, if you were paid to put a new culvert underneath M40, or Chief Newland, 179, all we got to do is go about 100 feet of ditching, replace a couple culverts, and that water doesn't even go to the lake, it goes downstream and there's plenty to drop on the other side of the road, and he's still in review. Jim Davis had his legs cut off from him a year and a half, two years ago. Used to be he could okay these projects, boom, 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 we were done, we got them done. They went back and their, for whatever reason, has restricted him on what he can rubber stamp real easy. rubber stamp real easy. So, it's, it's just slowed these projects right down. Other people on the, on Lynn Drive said, we don't want anything done because there's not a problem, which we always get in drain districts. You got the people that don't have a problem, but their water is adding to it, and it's pretty hard to explain to them, but hey, you know, if you could keep your water on, it would take you out of the district, but your water goes that way according to the engineers, so.
Pine Lake, are you planning on going forward with that?
At this point, we're waiting for the commissioners. We got our permit. It's a five-year permit. We got the three-year monitoring, irrevocable line of credit from the bank, but it's, it's on the commissioners. That is a lake level thing, and we're delegated authority, which basically says we're the person, get it, get it done, but the commissioners direct us, so.
Price Drain, easement acquisition underway?
Let me think where Price, that's out on Woods School Road. We've talked to the one gentleman. He sent his lawyer to talk to us and says, well, we don't want to give you an easement. The next one down, there's a culvert that is obstructing flow. Theoretically, we could do condemnation and take the property and get our easements. Bruce Rose hasn't said anymore about it. He was, there was a lot of blowback at that meeting, a lot of upset people. So, we also are looking at dredging the side of Woods School Road, which would lower that wetland, and then put a structure in downstream, a rock structure, to slow the water coming downstream. We believe that if we dropped that wetland a little bit, created a detention pond, which legally we can do, then it would be slower released and not flood Bruce out, but we are still looking at them easements. We had one of them that's changed hands twice again. The other gentleman worked for GM, and they have someone that contracted, says you can use the union lawyer for anything you need on your personal business. So, it's, yeah. So, it's kinda a strange deal, but that's what he explained to me, so.
All right. Just a, if, if you are able to keep these drains in an alphabetical order, they're so much easier to compare from one, one to another, because this was kind of a stream of consciousness kind of a.
Oh, yep.
On the presentation. Yeah, thank you very much.
Yep.
Okay. Michelle? There was one question from Mr. White.
First, I want to thank you for keeping me out of trouble when I talked about pulling some logs out of my place on the Thorne Apple River. If I damage any of the bank there, I am then dealing with your three and four-letter state agencies. I guess my real question is, what's your minimum timeline that you have gotten through the state agencies, DEQ and stuff? What's your average? And then, right now, I'm gonna say there's some that are gonna be infinity. Is that pretty accurate?
Our quickest that we've got a permit from DEQ, I believe, was the Gun Lake Dam. That was seven years ago, and I think we cleared that in about five, six months. We have Shadow Lake that, when Audrey Kirk was our Berry County girl, she had already reviewed the permit, was ready to give it to us, and then we found out, one of the engineers said, yep, we can take this culvert out and replace it. Real simple project, all set to do the permit. Audrey was all good with it. We had 11 landowners agree that the invert of that culvert was a good lake level, even though we weren't getting a lake level, we weren't going through the courts on that. And then we found out from an engineer that we could take the culvert out, we can't put a new one in without a petition. Seriously, this is no kidding. So, we got our easement from Jody May. We submitted our permit again after we worked through it because it was timed out. Now with Kelsey, we've had a lot of pushback, but you gotta remember, the DEQ agency has changed considerably. They have a lot of people there, a lot of them don't have the background to take, to make a decision. The higher-ups always lay it on the low man's step so that they can blame them, which, you know, is good protection for themselves, is the way I can see it. But Kelsey has pushed back and pushed back and pushed back and pushed back. We were gonna put a concrete wall in there, which was the same height as the invert of the culvert, and they said, oh, now you gotta go get a culvert at a lake level. I said, you're talking about 11 properties, and they're not high-end properties. We're not doing that. So, our, our permit at this point is an egg-shaped culvert, and instead of dropping the culvert and putting a wall in, we'll put in the culvert at the, at the invert, which, by the way, is lower than the outlet of the lake, the dirt outlet, so it can't serve as a lake-level structure. But we're gonna put that in. It is finally out for review. I mean, this is about, let's see, 17, four years? And I, I reached out to Kelsey back March 29th with an email saying, where is this permit? It's been swirling around the bar now for three and a half years. I did get a response a week ago. Which drain are you talking about? Now, you gotta remember, March 29th to May, so either the emails get stuck and clouded or they're just, but they are, in their defense, they are buried. And the Drain Commissioners of the county did not do themselves a favor. They created a survey of all the complaints of DEQ. Yeah, and guess what? No, they're not, I mean, they're good people, they just don't, you know, it's like, but you are, but you go back a little bit further, in the Flint Water Crisis, they actually sued DEQ agents civilly for that. So, if they can find a way to say no or prolong it, you can't blame them for that. I mean, that is their, when they lose their government immunity, they're not good.
What's the timeline on the Thorne Apple River assessment before people's?
When we get it done, we'll start it, and it'll be, Julie Calley, thank God, create, she passed, got a legislation passed that instead of assessing something over three years, we can now do it up to 10 years. And that's what we went to the village and the townships and said, look, we could do a little bit this year and a little bit next year and a little bit next year, and, or with a resolution to exceed and a 10-year thing, we can do it all at once, everybody gets a benefit right off the bat, and we can spread that for 10 years, so.
And then for options?
Yep. So, it, it just worked out good. So, the, the townships have been phenomenal. We've got a lot of good agencies that have been phenomenal to work with. I mean, DEQ sometimes is good, but the Road Commission's been excellent, the townships have been excellent. The commission has been phenomenal for us, so we appreciate it.
Okay.
Any questions?
Thank you.
Thank you, kids. I'll give this back to Leslie.
Okay.
The board's gonna take a five to seven-minute recess, and we'll be back.
Motion by Hatfield, support by Getty for approval in the claims of the amount of $116,988.26. Is there additional discussion? Madam Clerk, would you call the roll?
Colton.
Aye.
Getty.
Aye.
Smelker.
Aye.
Hatfield.
Aye.
Campbell.
Aye.
Tunisen.
Aye.
Doster.
Aye.
Jackson.
Aye. The motion is approved.
Mr. Chairman, I move approval of the reappointment to the Berry County Land Bank Authority of Dan King to a three-year term that began March, or May 1st, 2024 and ends on April 30th, 2027, and David Jackson to a three-year term that began on May 1st, 2024 and ends on April 30th, 2027.
Is there support?
Support.
Motion by Hatfield, support by Tunisen for approval of reappointing to the Berry County Land Bank Authority of Dan King to a three-year term that began on May 1st, 2024 and ends April 30th, 2027, and David Jackson to a three-year term that began on May 1st, 2024 and ends on April 30th, 2027. Discussion. Commissioner Smelker, last week you asked if I was serving in that as a commissioner or as a citizen-at-large, and I believe the discussion with Michael said that I am indeed a citizen-at-large in that role, so it is not tied to a term of a commissioner. Additional discussion? Hearing none. Madam Clerk, will you call the roll?
Getty.
Aye.
Smelker.
Aye.
Hatfield.
Aye.
Campbell.
Aye.
Tunisen.
Aye.
Doster.
Aye.
Colton.
Aye.
Jackson.
Aye. The motion is approved.
Mr. Chairman, I now refer to the item that was moved from the consent agenda to the items for consideration, and move the approval to appoint Sylvia Raffels to serve on the Berry County Veterans Affairs Committee for a partial term that began on January 1st, 2023 and expires on December 31st, 2026.
Is there support?
Support.
Motion by Hatfield, support by Campbell for approval to appoint Sylvia Raffels to serve on the Berry County Veterans Affairs Committee for a partial term that began on 1/1/2023 and expires 12/31/26. Discussion.
Did anyone, was anyone able to contact the Veterans Affairs to see what, if they wanted any more people on that board?
Thank Commissioner Smelker.
Okay.
Yes, I talked to Lanny Forbes, which Veterans Affairs is through United Way, and she says the board is administrative and there's five on it, and at this time they're not looking to enlarge it.
Okay.
And they're doing fine, so I feel if it's not broke, let's leave it where it is.
And did you mention that the two of those positions will come up here at the end of the year?
Yeah.
Is there any indication whether they're going to re-apply?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, the end of the year is a little ways away yet, but yeah, and I think that's one of the misnomers, is that the board is very administrative as far as reviewing bills, doing administrative-type things. It's not necessarily boots-on-the-ground with veterans, so I think sometimes that board has a little turnover because people are frustrated with what they're actually doing administratively, so.
Well, I had just thought, you know, we used to have a Veterans Affairs Director who that, we do?
Yes, running through the United Way.
Yeah, we contract though with United Way to administer the funds, but we used to have an individual who had their own office here in the, in the county, was actually in Michael's office when I was here before. So I thought, well, maybe more, more hands would be helpful, but if it's purely administrative, maybe that is not the case, so.
And the fellow that is in charge of the VA over there underneath, Lanny, has his own office in the United Way.
Oh, okay.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
I think the boots-on-the-ground is conducted mostly through the VFWs, the Legions, the Elks, the, they're the ones that actually go help the veterans out door-to-door, whatever they need and stuff like that, and occasionally we'll go to the Veterans Affairs to maybe help somebody financially with something, but most of the boots-on-the-ground is done with the outer, outer groups.
I agree. Thank you, Bruce. If there's no discussion, Madam Clerk, will you call the roll?
Smelker.
Yes.
Hatfield.
Yes.
Campbell.
Yes.
Tunisen.
Aye.
Doster.
Aye.
Colton.
Aye.
Getty.
Aye.
Jackson.
Aye. The motion is approved.
Unfinished business, we have none. New business, we have none. County administrators' report?
I'm all set, thank you.
Chairperson's report. I am all set as well. We're just at the beginning of the meeting cycle. Vice chairperson's report?
I'm all set as well. I just want to thank all of you for the well wishes over the last couple of weeks, as I was unfortunately absent, so thank you.
Okay. Commissioner reports. Commissioner Tunisen?
I don't know if Bruce and Catherine are going to talk about this, but we were at the Health Department meeting last week, and seems to be quite a, maybe they got a different sentiment from it, but seems to be a lot of parents who are getting vouchers and opting out of immunizing their children, which I think is somewhat concerning to me. I mean, my kids were vaccinated for measles, polio, stuff like that, and if they're, if they opt out of this and their kid comes down with measles in school, then they're going to be quarantined for weeks, weeks. So, I don't know, you know, I don't know, there might be some pushback thinking their kids are going to get autism from all the different shots. I mean, there's a lot of different narratives out there, but they talk quite a bit about this. I mean, I think they're concerned that polio can make a comeback, different diseases could, that have been eradicated could come back, so just wanted to bring it up.
Thank you. Commissioner Campbell?
Yeah, just to reiterate on that, it's made for concern, obviously, and, you know, I'm a vaccinator, I vaccinate my kids, but some, some folks just don't worry about that and they don't do it, so I think it's right that they still maintain that right to make that decision, even though I feel sometimes it puts other people in danger by doing that, but. And then I did attend the Community Action, and of course we had a little change in venue because we were Thursday at the COA, so that was a little different for the Health Board, but everything went well and went good, had a good weekend.
Thank you. Vice Chair Hatfield.
Yes.
Oh, where already did you?
Yeah.
Commissioner Smelker?
I have 9-1-1 this afternoon, and then a Central Dispatch Financial Board meeting first to June.
Okay. Commissioner Getty?
I have Berry County Parks and Rec. We awarded our mini-grants to, for a kayak launch in Prairieville, and something else. There is a little one. It'll come to me. But we did award our mini-grants, and those are really important, I think, to help our townships and smaller municipalities complete a project, an impactful project. I have Village tonight.
Okay. Commissioner Colton?
Was it a baseball field in Nashville?
Yes, thank you.
For that. Thanks. Great, great. This last weekend attended both Woodland and Nashville Memorial Day events, and we got the Garden Inn, and it is beautiful, a sight to behold if you're ever in Nashville. Thank you.
Okay. Commissioner Doster?
The Gun Lake Improvement Board is holding a special board meeting tonight at 6:00 at the Orangeville Township Hall, and for further discussion on the renewal of the special assessment for weed control for Gun Lake.
Special meeting?
Special meeting.
Okay. And is that for another five-year renewal, or do they do?
They are currently looking at only a three-year, but it has not been decided, well, because, yet, that's part of the purpose of this meeting.
Okay. Thank you. Limited public comment at this time. Any member of the public wishing to address the board may do so for up to three minutes.
Good morning. With more of our township, lifelong resident of Berry County and third-generation Berry County business person, I want to let people know the wonderful news that the trail is being paved through Nashville. We'll finally be able to connect the Forest Street Elementary School with the Berry Eaton County line. The trail will be paved as far as Curtis Road, so you can get on Curtis Road and ride on that, and people riding on Curtis Road can get on the trail, but it also crosses Reed Street on county property and continues east towards the Eaton County line, so Eaton County can pave their section of the trail, and they'll be able to ride on a paved trail all the way to the Maple Valley High School, where more people from Berry County go to that school than Eaton County. So it's a benefit for Berry County residents. Hopefully Eaton County will do that. If they don't, then Rick will be working with them for many years to continue this project, because I've been working on this since June 9th of 1981. It's been a long time, but we're making progress. And the speed of government is slow, but I'm continuously working on that, and I have excellent help right now doing this, so I'm no longer the dictator of the trail. Catherine Getty has done a wonderful job, the Parks Commission is doing a wonderful job, the five-year plan and the upgrades for Charlton Park on the internet, the maps are looking wonderful. So this is a wonderful time for Berry County and recreational opportunities, because if you look at the map, you see that we don't have any expressways going through Berry County, because we're a farming and recreational community, and I'm extremely grateful for that. And I'm extremely grateful for this board and the ARPA money that made these projects available for infrastructure for the community in which a recreational trail is infrastructure. When a previous county commissioner said people over 60 don't exercise and we don't want to, he promptly had a heart attack and is no longer on the board, and this happens many years ago. Because I quit drinking 52 years ago, I remember all of this stuff. So thank you very much for the opportunity, and thank Jim Dahl for the little grabber right here.
There you go.
Thank you very much for the opportunity to speak. I'm written, or I support this message. Thank you.
Thank you, Rick. Additional public comment?
How's it going again? Glad to see you're better today.
Thank you.
We have different political views and stuff, but we're still people out there. When you, at your county meeting, it was said that your meetings are getting in the way of your meetings in general with this administration search, county administrative search. If you look at what you do at your committee as a whole, nine, you have A through H on there, so what you do is just double approve what you're doing. If you as a county government can't show efficiency, why should people underneath you have to show efficiency? When you're voting on the same thing twice, to me it makes no sense. I think you have a responsibility to the people to be efficient. When you approved 9A and 9B, once as Board of Commissioner meeting minutes, once as committee as a whole meeting minutes, are you saying that you are truly just one in the same with just different headings on them? With all the things that are coming up, how important is your time to be efficient, make yourself more efficient? And if you, if you never think that there's an importance to view and make changes or review, you will not be the example that you want your employees to be, or the people underneath you, serving you. You know, at the Village, we actually became efficient with our agendas. They actually now have went from one, from two meetings a month down to one meeting a month. The Village Office is open four days a week instead of five days a week, and it hasn't had a negative impact on people. So I said it's just one of those things. If you don't look how to improve and don't discuss how to improve, how can you improve your own selves? So once again, this is one of those things. You're acknowledging that the committee of the whole and the Board of Commissioners are the same, one in the same. If I'm wrong there, as I, I'd ask any one of your commissioners come up and explain it to me, because I guess we have different view on the Open Meetings Act. Are your county administrators not responsible to ensure that you're following the guidelines of Open Meetings Act? You're the elected official, and that Open Meetings Act is directed at elected officials. I still have concerns of how your point of contact was done. If they have authority to make decisions for the board, the authority and the parameters should have been set at that. I also have concerns on the person, just based on his comments, the person you hired as the firm. I said, this because you didn't have another choice is where you're at now. Thank you.
Additional public comment?
Mr. Chairman, I move, oh, sorry. Joel?
Not the first time.
All right, Joel.
So, Joel, it's in Rutland Township, can't forget that. To Mr. Tunisen's concern with vaccine hesitancy among parents and getting waivers for their kids, there are plenty of reasons that our Health Department has given for parents to doubt their sincerity for the health of kids. Remember, there were three schools during the pandemic that remained open, and the health officer only sent cease and desist letters to two of those. Why is that? Well, because, I'll say it again, as I've said before, she was more concerned about her paycheck than she was the actual health of students, at least that's the way I see it, because the $600 a month pandemic, what do you call it, the supplement, didn't come close to her six-figure salary. Yeah, she's a liar. Not only is Colette Scrimgeour a liar, she's great at copy and pasting, remember that, during the pandemic. All she could do was copy and paste Inglewood County to Berry County, and not only did she do a terrible job at that, she forgot to put in the correct numbers as they related to Berry County. So vaccine hesitancy in part stems from our health officer, who is a liar. All she knows how to do is copy and paste. We know that from the pandemic. Split the Health Department. Let's have our own health officer from Berry County here to serve Berry County. And by the way, you don't need to take my word for it on her being a liar. All you need to do is talk to the seven Eaton County Commissioners that signed a letter stating that she is a liar. On news other than that, at least what I hope will be becoming news here shortly, I would really appreciate it if this board, if someone would put together an agenda request to go over deputy and corrections, pay, and retirement age. As I said, the, as per one of the studies I mentioned prior, the average life expectancy of a corrections officer is 60. Our retirement age is 59 and a half. That's not cool. That's not a good look on the county. Thank you.
Thank you, Joel. Additional public comment?
I have a do a positive note here. Nice job Saturday. Very proud of that man, right there, for getting up and speaking, and I don't think there's a dry eye in the, in the crowd out there. If you guys get a chance, Ring's Row, they put on a very good ceremony, and they do it the day before, I'm sorry, it's Sunday, wasn't it, Sunday? Yeah, I'm sorry. They do it the day before Memorial Day, and then they take it on over to Yankee Springs, which, yeah, we all got wet there, didn't we? But that didn't destroy spirit, did it? It was really, they, they did the program in Ring's Row, they, he gave a very heartfelt speech, and you could, you could tell, I mean, I don't know, just words can't describe it. You got to get there and, and check it out for yourself. Yankee Springs, it was kind of funny because it was also, we were kind of hurried because you got this big old storm coming at us, and I tell you about those trumpet players that stood there and finished the taps with that wind blowing around, it was stinging my face. I can't imagine them facing it with a trumpet and their, up to their lips there. And then when it started sideways rain, everybody moved into the fire barn, and that didn't stop everybody, because they had a Navy veteran there that decided he'll play guitar, and seemed some very patriotic songs. So if you guys missed out, I hope to see you next year there. I highly recommend you go there. Nice job, Bruce.
Thank you. Additional public comment?
Under Sheriff Jason Sixey, I just wanted to let everybody know you may have received an email that if you work for the Berry County or anything, as well as a phone call or something, but M66 will be closed at Bivens and through Lawrence Road starting today, just to let everybody else know out there.
Okay. Good information. Thank you. Additional public comment? Hearing none. Commissioner comments. Commissioner Doster?
I have nothing further.
Okay. Commissioner Colton?
I was talking with the road commission about the closure, and Jake from Berry County Road Commission says actually MDOT project starts today. They're diverting traffic from Nashville to 79 up to Asseri Road, then all the way back up, come back up Lawrence Road, because they're doing work on the Craker Brook Bridge there. That will be going on until August.
Okay.
Long time.
All right. We're going to pause Commissioner comments because I missed item 20 on our agenda, other business.
Mr. Chairman, I move we go into closed session in accordance with Public Act 267 of 1976, dash 15.258, Section 8H, to consider material exempt from discussion or disclosure by state or federal statute.
Is there support?
Support.
Motion by Hatfield, support by Smelker, to move to go into closed session in accordance with Public Act 267 of 1976, 15.268, Section 8H, to consider material exempt from discussion or disclosure by state or federal statute. Discussion?
Mr. Chairman, I think that last week you, you mentioned the, what the purpose was that we were going into closed session, and I can't remember what it was. Could you, could you remind me?
To review on our solar ordinance.
Okay. Thank you.
Yep.
With our attorney, correct.
Okay.
Madam Clerk, will you call the roll?
Hatfield?
Yes.
Campbell?
Aye.
Tunisen?
Aye.
Doster?
Aye.
Colton?
Aye.
Getty?
Aye.
Smelker?
Aye.
Jackson?
Aye. The motion is approved. The board is now adjourned. Will we go into closed session? Oops.
Chairman, no, it's not correct. We're recessed.
We're recessed for closed session. Thank you.
We'll come back into open session and we will take a roll call for approval of the minutes of closed session.
A roll call to confirm attendance.
Roll call to confirm attendance, okay. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Doster.
President.
Colton.
President.
Getty.
Here.
Smelker.
Here.
Hatfield.
Here.
Campbell.
Here.
Tunison.
Here.
Jackson.
Here.
Thank you. Now we need a motion for approval of the minutes of closed session.
Perfect.
It's a move, Doster. Motion by Doster, support by?
Hatfield.
Hatfield. Discussion. Madam Clerk, will you call the roll?
Colton.
Aye.
Getty.
Aye.
Smelker.
Aye.
Hatfield.
Aye.
Campbell.
Aye.
Tunison.
Aye.
Doster.
Aye.
Jackson.
Aye. It is approved. Thank you. We were last resuming on Commissioner comments, so I will start again. Commissioner comments, Commissioner Doster.
I have nothing further.
Okay. Commissioner Colton? Commissioner Getty?
I'd just like to say I attended a couple of memorial ceremonies over the weekend and I'm proud to be in a county that recognizes Memorial Day in the spirit in which we should. So both in Middleville and in Yeekey Springs and hearing about the services that were held in other places in the county. It's just nice to be here.
Absolutely. Commissioner Smelker?
I was also impressed on how many were at the memorial in Middleville in the ring.
Vice Chair Hatfield?
I have nothing.
Commissioner Campbell?
I attended and participated in three of those memorials this weekend. It was very appreciative to see fellow commissioners Mark Doster and Catherine Getty at them and it was very nice to have it.
Okay. Commissioner Tunison?
Okay. Just as a couple of comments. I appreciate Brad being here for his expeditions to work on that in spite of us trying to interrupt his vacation to make all this work. But I think we have come up with an ordinance that represents what we want to see in the county, which was broad protections for farmland and definitely, I would say it's not compatible with what the state would want to see, but it's compatible with what we want to do in protecting farmland. So Brad is going to make some changes that we had talked about in closed session and will be getting those copies out to us shortly. The board did agree that I think that ordinance, draft ordinance could be released, so we'll get that out to the public as soon as that's available. So we thank you all for attending and waiting for us today and we will look forward to seeing you all soon. Thank you and have a great day.